March work session to order. And I'm going to ask Ms. Anaya to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Thursday, January 14, 2021, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Agrover Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Agrover Township Clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this hybrid meeting were posted on our website and on social media on Friday, March 5, 2021.
May we have roll call, please?
Ms. Alabarta?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Here.
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here.
Thank you.
I'm here, too.
Oh, Patrick. Hi.
Forgot Mr. Ireland.
Mr. Ireland, how you doing?
Good.
May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion. Terry, and who was second? I just heard you up.
Terry, Mrs. -- okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we are adjourned to executive session. To call our March work session meeting to order now. Reconvening after executive session. And I'm going to ask Ms. Anaya to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please. Take your time.
On Thursday, January 14, 2021, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Agrover Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Agrover Township Clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this hybrid meeting were posted on our website and on social media on Friday, March 5, 2021.
Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Ms. Alabarta?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Present.
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here.
Thank you.
Can we all please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and welcome again to our March work meeting. So in addition to the regular business that we would do at a work meeting, we have two major initiatives underway right now, as I'm sure you are all aware. The first is our Road Forward Plan. That's our effort for increased in-person instruction, which will be effective on March the 22nd of this month. That is our schedule. And the second major initiative, as you are equally aware, I'm sure, is continued work on next year's budget. That budget is due to the county office on March the 20th, and so we will be voting on it next Tuesday. We will be voting on a total amount to submit to the county. Just want to take a quick minute to thank Dr. Gruccio, Ms. Anaya, and the entire administration for their very hard work on these two initiatives, both very, very difficult and time-consuming, a lot of moving parts. And I really just want to take a minute to thank all of our employees, all of our staff. I know I'm going to leave somebody out, but, you know, our teachers, our parents, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, our IT folks, our custodians, everyone, our counselors. So important reaching out to those students who may need some extra help. Everyone is doing such a great job during these very, very difficult circumstances. We are still, as I finish thanking all of our staff, we are still working diligently on finding ways to get our staff vaccinated. That remains a priority for us. We're exploring every option and every avenue to do that. I think it's fair to say we all feel like we're getting just a little bit closer to the end with each passing day. The weather's getting nicer, the news is getting better, and I just feel that if we continue to work together, we're going to get there. So with that, I am going to turn the floor over to Dr. Gruccio for both Road Forward and Budget Presentations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Castellano, and I concur. Working together and that teamwork approach gets us to the place we have to be. So good evening, everyone. A few updates this evening. One, our COVID-19 update. Our confirmed positive cases, that includes students and staff in the district, over the past 14 days, we have a total of 19. Our staff currently who are quarantined as of March 9, 18. Students currently in quarantine as of March 9, 133 for our total. Mr. Castellano mentioned vaccines. As you know, the Board passed a resolution about a month ago, and I myself have sent letters expressing the need for school district employees to be vaccinated. And the Governor has just recently recognized a need for educators and have given them a place in line, and we appreciate that. I've also heard that the Agrover Township School District are also stressed that the school district is willing to serve as a site for vaccinations. Supported by Mr. Castellano, I've been in communications with our nursing supervisor, Ms. Karen Semet, who has made contact and reached out to CVS, Walgreens, Rite Aid, and Carexa, who is a provider when we give our flu shots. And we are looking to partner with someone to distribute vaccines to our own employees. And I'm happy to say that we received this response today, and we are getting closer. We just have to iron out some logistics. So more to come on this, and hopefully that information will come your way tomorrow or the next day. So we are getting closer. We did get a response, and I'm very excited about that. We guarded our survey. So we had a survey that the school district shared with parents and guardians last week, closed, and we did some work calculating that data. Last time I shared, we were still seeking 5,000 responses, and during March 1 through 3, our staff was really all hands on deck and reached out via phone call, making communication, and got approximately 4,500 responses to assist us with this survey. I want to thank everybody who assisted us with this, particularly Ms. Sharon Gaskell, who worked with the data, worked with Mr. Santilli, and provided us relevant and in-depth data for our principals to work with as we plan forward. I'm going to share some data right now regarding the responses, as promised, to show the district and show the community where we stand. All right? So this is an overall picture of the school district and the responses that we received in the dark blue. They are parental responses for returning to school in person, 59.6 percent. And then that light blue slice right there, I want to make note that they are the students that have been already attending in person the five days a week. So in combination, that gives us 62.5 percent who have requested to return to in-person school. The orange is, are the all virtual responses. So Mr. Santilli, moving to the next slide, we broke it down, the data by school, and you have your 62.5 percent in your blue shades, your 37.5 percent in your orange shades. And I'll take you to the bottom. We have 7,189 students on roll. And I'll take you back up to the top. It'll use Swift School as an example. So if you take Swift across, you can see they have 459 students total and 345 are slated to return in person. And there's the data that you could look at for each school in the district, percentage-wise and number-wise. We're bringing it down to the high school, which is very interesting, the 2,272 total population, it really looks like it's a 50-50 split that'll be returning to the high school. But we'll emphasize, as we study the data, that the elementaries seem to have, or do have, more in-person students returning, more so than the secondary level. As we grow, we become more independent learners. That could be the reason. But I didn't ask for responses as to why or why not folks will be returning or staying virtual. So without assuming anymore, here's the facts. This is the data. This is what we work on. This is what we used today in a meeting with our principals, and they looked at their data. And now their job today and tomorrow is to go back into their buildings, look at, you know, how these numbers fit, look at their situations in terms of the classrooms, their needs for facility, their needs for looking at their cafeteria, and what needs that they have regarding PPE. So we're going to give them some time to do that, have discussions with their staff. Teacher rosters are being developed. And once all that stuff is drilled down in terms of numbers, we'll really have an idea of where we need to be innovative, if there has to be some alternative learning or eating areas, that's going to be explored, and then present it back to central administration so that we can meet the needs of each school. Because each school is different, each school has a different size, each school has a different population. You know, some schools have auditoriums, one does not, or some do not. So there's many, many variables that we have throughout the district in our 10 schools. So just to give an update as to where we are right now, it's a very, very huge task, but I know my administration will not let us down or their students and staff down. Just give them some time to digest it and act upon it, but we are definitely in innovation mode. We're looking at anything from tents to room configurations to alternate, use of alternate spaces. Okay? So again, as Mrs. Castellano stated, on March 22, it's our target date for our first phase to occur. That's four abbreviated days and one in-person, I mean, one virtual day. Let me state that again. Four abbreviated in-person days and one virtual day. On this date, we would also like to bring in our Eagle Academy and Bridge students for more days, because this group would join our special ed, our special programs, and our pre-K program. So that's something we're working on now. But as promised, I would share this research and our next steps. And there are next steps beyond March 22 that we are researching. You know, we discussed it in public about abbreviated days moving to full days and the four days moving to five. So again, we're at the drawing board, being innovative, but I will share those next steps when they come to fruition. And there's other stakeholders that have to be brought into that conversation. And I will, I always have to say, and I will put the disclaimer out there in writing and verbally, that we keep this in mind, this is all contingent upon the current COVID-19 status, which is consistently right now remaining in the yellow zone, but as we know, you know, has the possibility of changing. This brings me to a break. Today, we sent a memo to staff reminding them about the travel advisory. This is one that's clearly posted on every airline, motor transportation, or hotel website that reminds people that there is a travel advisory out there. And the one that we have to follow comes from New Jersey Department of Education, Department of Health, and that New Jersey residents are bound to have knowledge of travel advisory. But right now, today, travel advisory states if you're traveling out of state, other than the states of Pennsylvania, Delaware, and New York, and Connecticut, upon return, you must quarantine for 10 days. You do have the option to take a COVID test three to five days after you return. If that test is negative, you can quarantine seven days. Again, that is, they are the guidelines that we have at this time. They are the orders that our physician, school physician, has shared with us, and at this time today, this is what we communicated to staff. And lastly, middle school sports. I know that was a question that we have in the public and board members. We did our homework. We are moving forward. I accepted Mr. Palladino's proposal. So on the next agenda, the middle school coaches will be up for board approval. April 1, it looks like physicals will be due, and more details for practices will follow. Competition, however, will be limited, but we're looking to hopefully get at least eight games in there. And right now, we have about three schools who are committed to participate, and also we have our Alder and Fernwood that'll compete against each other once, twice, maybe a few times. But we're going to make it happen, because I want to get kids out there moving. I think it's good for their heart, soul, social, emotional, and physical well-being. So thank you.
All right. At this time, Chandra will present the budget.
Sharing a window, right, Steve? The whole window, entire screen or window? No videos. So we had a meeting last week, and I'll start with this one. We had a meeting last week. We presented our budget, a balanced budget. It had everything that the Board has set as a goal, everything we have as a district goal, and supported all of that with meeting it all into our buckets, as we spoke about. Since last week's meeting, we had some board member questions. Things have come up that we just wanted to update you on. Normally, in the past, it's been presentation every week on all the changes. The questions we received were clarification inquiries, so I have information on that, not necessarily a slideshow presenting you. So I'm going to show you some pieces of the puzzle a little bit deeper today. So starting with a question regarding our HVAC plan and our long-term project projections. We had our Facilities Department do a presentation on January 21 of 2020, and I just took a couple pieces of that to kind of dive a little deeper into where we came up with our numbers for the $52 million. So the 662, this image is something you guys have seen. These are 662 district-wide HVAC pieces of equipment, whether it's a rooftop unit, air handler, or boilers. So this is a combination of a district-wide view. And then Mr. Brenetto was able to show this pie of how many are well over 20 years old, how many are between 17 and 19 years old, and how many are 15 years and younger. This was from 2020, so it's one year ago. We're looking at planning for 2122, and that projection we gave you was for the next three years. It went to 2024. So in the next three years, we identified 585 pieces of equipment, which is these two yellow and red brackets, that would then total the $52 million identified between the Facilities Director and the Architect. That is a projection we see that we will have a need for. The biggest concern we will be talking about, and this is now we can actually implement with the capital reserve money, is not being reactionary. We don't want to have to shut a building down because a whole section goes down because of a rooftop unit that may have gone out. So this is to help prevent that from happening, but it's just some of the units are very old, and we wanted to make sure we were proactive about it. So that's where that came from. In addition to those projects, we had some roofing identified, and it's basically, we gave a 25-year cycle. We've had some roofs that don't last that long. They have 20-year warranty, and one after 20 years, it's done. We've had some that are 20 years old and have lasted up to 30. So we actually had our architect and a structural engineer go onto every rooftop and identify the spaces, and that's the number that was brought up in the Bridget proposal. Example, this is our Slable Elementary Building, broken out into four sections. Some sections of roofs are repaired or replaced at certain times. So when they walked the building, they did not just say, "This school is 40 years old, it just needs a new roof." They seriously went over the different sections and identified what was what in every building. And last but not least, concrete and asphalt also in that projection for the next few years, in that, again, everything was looked at on its own, not saying unilaterally, "We realized our place is parking lot six years ago, it's going to need it in another five." It's really truly looking and walking the grounds and identifying the needs that either aren't there or replacing existing concrete and asphalt structures. Any questions about the HVAC facilities, projection, long-term bucket? There's other things, but that's that piece. Do we clarify those? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Mrs. Byrd?
Sorry, yes.
In the Governor's proposed budget, we set aside money, capital maintenance and emergency emergent needs program for schools for capital improvements. Is that something we can tap into, or is that something they designate?
Specifically for HVAC projects, and that is in there, for the $4.2 million bucket we received for SRR2 funding. So what we're doing with SRR2, because it's federally funded, I will just say, as a business administrator, it's very difficult to get a construction project through the local government, state government, and then federal government. So what we chose to do is apply those funds towards out-of-district tuition, and that would offset our general budget cost and move the bucket of money to help the Facilities Department. In English, you have two different buckets, your general fund and your capital fund. The money coming in from the grant is going to go into general fund to offset tuition, which then makes it overflow. We're then going to take that overflow and put it into capital so that we can improve the HVAC units. So in theory, it is coming from the SRR funding. It's just flowing in a different bucket, specifically because to do a construction project with that much oversight, and it's going to be done properly, don't get me wrong, but it's a lot of construction file, a lot of more paperwork, and a lot more compliance to have to go through to get the projects done. So we're trying to do it local funding. Does that answer that question? Are you sure? Okay. I know it's not what you do every day, so I'm trying to make sure, try to simplify it a little bit. But we are using the funding to basically fund that. We would not be able to do it otherwise. So. Okay with that bucket?
Yes.
Good with that bucket. Another question we received is the Chrome, oh, I always use the wrong mouse, the HVAC. Another one we received is the IT technology plan. So I gave, this is a quick recap to show what we currently have, and we're calling it Chrome technology, because it's Chromebooks, Chrome cards, Chrome tabs, we're just calling it Chrome technology. So our current snapshot is showing here how, what we have and how we have. So the first line of Chromebooks, that's just our Chromebooks. We've had Chromebooks. Because of COVID in this past fiscal year, since last spring, in the last year, we've purchased another 1,500 for students and 750 for staff. So fiscal year '21 and fiscal '21 teacher, that's what that means. Chrome tablets are the tablets we purchased for special ed and kindergarten that now also covers for preschool as well. Oh, Chrome cards, I definitely spelled that wrong. And it's probably throughout, Chrome carts with a T. Chrome carts, we have in District 133 of them. And tech tubs, tech tubs hold, what is it, six or seven of them, very, very small plastic containers. They have a little lock we have in the district office just for, you know, our conference room, very few in the district. Which will be perfect, though, for the technology plan for pre-K, because there's only five in a room. So what we distributed as of today, right now, there's about 2,700 Chromebooks out, and of course, the teacher Chromebooks are out. The demand for 22 Chrome technology, Chromebooks, there's a demand, if we're doing the philosophy we spoke about just to recap last week, pre-K and K, Chrome tablets and some special ed departments. Grades one through five, Chromebooks with Chrome cards in the classroom, one-to-one ratio. Grades 6 through 12, one-to-one ratio with Chromebooks with a case and insurance. So the demand for next year's technology is to have 6,500 of Chromebooks, 264 of tablets, 114 carts, 50 tech tubs, cases for the Chrome tablets, and cases for the ones going home in middle school and high school. So what do we need to order? We've identified 5,200 Chromebooks. Now, if you go back up, you're like, but you have about, you know, 5,200 here. We have so many out, and we have about 2,500 expiring. Chrome technology has a license for three or four years, depending on which product you're buying, and it will not work after that. We talked about that last week, which is why we have a three-year and a four-year cycle. So we have some expiring. Between the ones expiring and the ones coming back in questionable conditions, this is what our IT department put together, we have to purchase 5260 to go with the one-to-one plan for next year. We have enough Chrome tablets, we have enough Chrome cards. We do need more tech tubs, and that's going to be for pre-K, K, and special ed. We're having those in a ratio of three to one. So if there's 15 kids in a pre-K room, three to one, you only need five in there. So a tech tub would be perfect. You don't need a whole cart of 30. Cases and insurance, again, that's for the tech tubs, let's see, the tech tablets, Chrome tablets, excuse me, Chrome tablets, and for the ones that go home. Total budget of 1.5 million. What bucket is it coming from? We're lease purchasing about a million dollars' worth, and we're going to use the SRR2 funding portion for another half a million. Okay. Questions on the Chrome technology piece? Leads me right into the Chrome technology, technology personnel we're recommending. A question came up on what is this person going to be responsible for? I will not read this to you. I will just summarize it with their primary goal is to manage all of those devices, that demand sheet of next year of every student having three to one or one-to-one, the devices, the insurance, the GoGuardian, which kind of monitors what's going on. That person's sole responsibility is managing that. However, built into the job description, which we will then create once it's approved by the Board, will be also to support the Technology Department in the areas listed here. Provide technical support throughout the district, just help the department as a whole, which has, we have all become very tech savvy. So I will say, teachers have done a great job adjusting with this, but they will be implementing more in the class, and we believe, next year, so they will have more support needed. Questions on the personal recommendation for the Chrome philosophy, technology philosophy? Yes, Mrs. Byrd?
Okay. Is this position truly a full-time position? We have so many part-time employees in the district that have worked here for a really long time and would love that full-time opportunity. I know right now, you know, when we get back to school and the kids are all using new materials, it might be a little difficult, but I think once they get used to it, the demand won't be as great. So starting off full-time, you know, what's the justification for that?
So I will just say, let's, we have 7,000 students, about 750, 700, between 700 and 800 teachers to be using this technology daily. Take Chrome out of the equation. We have a full-time staff now that can barely keep up with the help desk calls. There's all hands on deck when staff is in. Yes, there are peaks and valleys, but to say that we're going to implement a one-to-one philosophy with managing that, just, I lost my password just with this key popped out or I lost my charger and have to manage, and we track an infinite campus, every device with every student. I do believe that's a full-time job. Central Office believes it, hence we brought it forward to the Board for consideration. If it does evolve, it's something we can look at year after year, like we do everything to say, is it still a need? And that, we'll have that conversation, but, Mrs. Santilli, want to add anything?
The only thing I would probably add is the Chromebook cart conversation as well. You know, I've had, when we first went into this adventure with the pandemic, I would say that we came into Miller School, and I still remember that day clearly, going through the carts. And originally, I thought, well, we'll just break the cart down. Like, it can't be that hard. I will tell you that breaking a cart down is pretty difficult, but putting it back together is even more complex. And it doesn't sound like much, but it is, and doing that firsthand, I can tell you that that in and of itself, along with everything else that Ms. and I had talked about, we do truly feel there's a need, in addition to lots of other components. You know, we talk about trying to salvage what we can if parts, you know, if a Chromebook comes back and we can swap out keyboards because a keyboard is broken or keys are missing. It's kind of like that idea of cannibalizing what you have and trying to keep things moving. So all of those things are a need.
Any particular order?
I was just going to say that I can attest to, having worked in the district, we have an employee that does just telephones. And when he puts in, you know, his report of how many phones, how many, you know, going in the classrooms and keeping the equipment running, that, I think this is going to be enormous, that I definitely believe a full-time person is going to be needed. And if they don't, if they have a valley, they can help them with the other help calls they get. Is that correct?
To support the department as a whole, correct. Yes.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, I think that was a good question, asking about, you know, full-time versus part-time. And I think, the only thing I would say is that, you know, I just can't imagine bringing a person in full-time and then taking them down to part-time. But I definitely can concur with Mrs. Santilli. part-time. But I definitely can concur with Mrs. Santilli in reference to when they were talking about the Chrome Book Carts. I just almost had like a tick that came over me because it is, it is, it is really, it is real. This is not, you know, this is definitely a needed, a needed spot to do the Chrome Book Carts and to, just to keep up with all the technology. So I definitely think it's a, it's a good, it's going to be an asset. And looking at where we're headed with technology and education, it's going to be a continuous need. And like you said, maybe that person could, you know, if it goes to a valley or a little part, we could definitely use them in another area.
Thank you. Any other questions with the Chrome Technology Philosophy or Staffing? At home, I can't see you, so just speak up. Okay. We're going to move on. Another question that came up was sick leave payout is in your budget. It's also on this agenda for to approve for next year. So the question came up of exactly, how is that calculated? And I was like, welcome to my hell. I'll also put it, I'm sorry, that's bad. This is a nightmare. So basically, every year for the audit, and every year, we have to actually try to think of what our liability is. If everybody were to retire at once, or majority, do some reasonable estimation of how you think people will retire, there is none. There's no real way to predict it. So we put out information in the bargaining agreements that say you have to tell Central Office by a certain day if you're going to be retiring. And if you retire by that said day, you will then get your sick time payout the following July. That way, in the days in the fall, we extended it to the spring because of COVID, or to the winter, excuse me. Once we know that number, we can then build it into the budget so we can pay it the following July. So it's in your budget, and it's on this agenda to approve the amount in total. So basically, based on if you're in the EHTEA bargaining agreement, and that Principals and Supervisors Bargaining Agreement, or if you're a non-union affiliate staff member, the rules are different. It's also based on your hire date. So I will just not read all this to you, but just say to highlight, PSA, for example, if you were hired after 99, you get the per diem rate, but it's capped at 15,000. If you're prior to 99, there's a whole other calculation. We took a snapshot when the rules changed, which was July 1 of 99, of everybody in the district, and we can maintain that spreadsheet. I have a copy. Dr. Grucci, our secretary, has a copy. And we just make sure that snapshot is taken into consideration. And that is the column called after, that's a capped column on your spreadsheet, and then there's an aftercap column. And that's the aftercap column is the pre-99 time. So anybody who had more than six days at that time, they get their accumulated time pre-99. If you are in the EHTEA agreement, I copied this, but it was not specific to any particular group, it's just the rules within there. This happens to be a teacher, but I didn't take out BA Step 1 because I wanted to give you an example. It's calculated 50% of BA Step 1 times the number of days accumulated. So it's a percentage of a percentage. And EHTEA is capped at 8,500. So 8,500 is in your capped column in your binders. Then there's a column next to it, if they were pre-99, like if they had enough time in 1999, they get that allotment as well. So that's how that's calculated there. And if you were non-affiliate, this passed actually just 2019, 2020, is just revisited because Central Office and non-union affiliates lost this. If you were hired after 1999, there was no way it could ever get accumulated time paid off for anybody not in a group. So this was something that the policy group came up with, along with administration's recommendation, that upon retirement, it's 25% of the accumulated days times the per diem of its final salary. And they're capped at 8,500 as well. So on your spreadsheet that you see, it'll have a staff member's name, the capped column, 8,500 or 15,000, whatever it may be, and any additional time that they had pre-1999. That's for unused sick time. I should have said that from the beginning. Questions on unused sick time and Mid-America, why it's on the agenda? I'll answer that question. We have this unused sick time. We cannot just write a check to said member. IRS rules, state rules, we have to put it into a 403B or a tax shelter annuity. It goes to Mid-America, who manages it for us. Mid-America then sends packets to our staff to say, we have your money, tell us what you want to do with it. You either keep it with them, or you can roll it into your own personal investment group or whatever you have. But we have to do that as a trust so that we don't have to pay and withhold all the taxes on behalf of that employee. So that's a Mid-America, that's why it's called Mid-America Approval Payment. It's just who we pay, who we send the money to, rather. Questions on sick time, accumulated sick time? Good, very good, thank you. Okay, I believe I answered Board Member questions. And before I move on to my next section of the agenda, I will just ask if there are any other questions that have not been asked or addressed at this time? Okay. Okay, looks like they're good at home as well. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and continue. If I can move on now, entire screen. Let's talk fun stuff. Mr. Dorso, I know you're listening. If you can chime in, just log into the link. And at the end, if you have questions, or if you want to add anything, you can go ahead and do so. Mr. Dorso was going to come today. He did have a family matter. Dogs are family. I don't care what anybody says. And he will be chiming in virtually because of that. Okay. So preschool expansion grant. This is our grant submission report to the state, I mean, for the state, to our Board of Education. We'll go over what we're going to be submitting. It is actually due tomorrow. They love giving us a lot of time for this stuff. We got our state aid less than two weeks ago, and we have to submit a grant tomorrow. So I'm going to give you the outline, a framework of what we're going to be submitting, along with a recap of where we are with the next steps. I'll just put it that way, and we'll get there. What is preschool expansion? As you all know, it's a free full-day program for 3- and 4-year-olds of Enkarpah Township residents. There is funding from the state and funding from our local budget. 2122 is actually year two of our five-year goal of hitting 90% of Enkarpah Township's universe. What is the universe? Oh, darn, wrong slide. Current program overview, 20 classrooms we started this year, one at the high school, 13 at slave ball, six at Guard of State Academy with 15 students in each room. There are 300 students total. We also have seven preschool disabled classrooms. But I used that word universe earlier. What is it again? The universe the state wants us to reach is our first-grade class size times two, which is about 900 students. They want us to hit 90% of that, meaning nine, to bring in 90% of that free preschool for 3- and 4-year-olds in five years, 810 students. This year, we have 300 students. Next year, with this budget we're submitting, we're looking at 371 students. And I will show you what that, how that is possibly be. The breakdown is, Mr. Dorso, I think I just got in, thank you. For 2021, we have 300 students, again, 371 for next year. In the next three years subsequent to that, to hit our five-year goal, we're looking at extending minimally 10 classes a year. I will just say, when we applied for this grant, we asked for, I believe, 24 classrooms. They gave us 20, which was very nice. $10 million grant, Enkarpah Township got 2.8 million. That was a huge accomplishment. Three days later, they had Dr. Grucci, Ray Dorso, and I on the phone and said, how many do you want for 2122? And we're like, another 20. And they very nicely went through how we were just starting. We haven't even hit our first enrolled child yet, let alone our first day of a program, and they felt it was mighty ambitious. So they told us that we would get somewhere between 0 and 20, but we probably weren't going to get the 20. But we tried. State aid came out, and they gave us another 60 students, which translates to four classrooms. We'll take it. We appreciate that. We are going to ask for 20 again next year, and probably the year after that, until we get there. But if they pace us out, it'll look like 10 a year. So our grant application we're submitting, 140 general education students here to be serviced here, that's our current population we have right now, that's going to be serviced here. Head Start has an agreement with the state and the federal government to, and affiliated with this grant, that we were, they reached out to us in the spring after we got the award, and said we want a part of it next year. We had the state call us and said, did you get Head Start's call? Well, you're going to partner with them next year. And I said, yes, ma'am. So that, actually, we spoke to them today. They initially thought they would have three classrooms. They are going to ask for two classrooms next year. Head Start tuition, I want to just highlight, because of their affiliation with the state and federal government, the amount we pay per student with Head Start is beneficial to us because it's about, not a half the cost, but it's significantly less than a provider rate of 14,000. So you get more bang for your buck if you think of it that way. So they have a program, they're funded locally, as well as the federal government, so they can make their program work. And it benefits us by having more students available. So even though it should have been 272 students, basically, is what was on the budget document, we're able to do 283 because we're partnering with Head Start for students at a much lower cost. I will stop there for question.
Right where you are at that point, are we going to have any say, oh, how are we going to pick the students that go there? And are we going to have any influence over the teachers and?
We can, that's a very good question. I can answer part of that now, and part of it is coming. So influence over teachers and curriculum, there are state mandates for certified staff, and who can actually be an instructor in these rooms, as well as the assistants. High school diplomas required for assistants, and certain certifications for actual staff working, as well as program directors, as well as master teachers. They have very thorough criteria on who can actually do the program. Curriculum, there's four different options. Enkarpah Township uses creative curriculum, and we expect our partners to do the same. Therefore, the students come in to full-day kindergarten with the same philosophies and backgrounds in their preschool education environment. The next part is for us, how do we get to pick the students? We will talk about that in maybe the very next slide. It's coming up very shortly.
Sean, do I have a question, Mr. Price?
Sure.
On Head Start, where are they going to be located, and what buildings or what?
So Head Start is actually a building that exists on Spruce Avenue. It's now existing right now, it's called Head Start Gateway. Very small building. I don't know how many they have classrooms they have total, but they are looking to partner with us for two of those rooms.
Do you know how long they've been there?
Quite a while. It's actually a state program. When we had our preliminary preschool meetings, this was a conversation I had with their director when she reached out and said, how come you didn't reach out to us? Everything online, on their website, they don't have one. But everything on New Jersey Grow, anything on the DOE's website for their contact information was null and void.
So usually, the way that you reach out to find if there's interest is through the internet and?
For last, when we started the studies about two years ago, we went to New Jersey Grow, and we went to the New Jersey Department of Education website to see who was certified as a childcare facility in Enkarpah Township. That was our initial reach out. And they were listed, but there was no valid information to reach them. Emails weren't going through, phone calls weren't going through. After the director reached out to us, we explained our process and how we tried to partner, because that is a very, you get a lot of points in your application for reaching out to them. She said the prior director never updated. That was all her personal information, and then she just closed her phone and did all that. So they're working on that, because it hasn't been updated as of yesterday either. But they are working on it. She attended, the director did attend our meeting yesterday. So she, the program director is actually the regional person reaching out to us. I have yet to meet the person in Enkarpah Township, but that's evolving. So.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Mrs. Bird, if that's okay, Mr. Price? Okay, go ahead.
This is very ambitious.
Which is, I'm sorry?
It's very ambitious, all of it. Adding more and more classrooms and using different vendors and things like that. What I, I'm slightly concerned as to where are we going to put these children when they go to kindergarten and first grade and second grade? Because that's a lot of kids.
So the good news is these 810 slash 900 universe are two grade levels. And our average grade right now, between 5 and 600. But for some reason, even kindergarten and first grade are in the low fours. So we do have space for them when they do grow up. It's not one class, it's actually three and four-year-olds. So it will be two separate age ups, if you will.
So the trends support these numbers?
Correct. They take our first-grade population and times by two. So that's.
What about the birth rates?
Birth rates are actually declining, and I did present, I think it was either last year's budget, or maybe the prior year, maybe it was probably two budgets ago, we did do birth rate trends. And we would be projected to lose 100 students a year for the next five years. This is why we were able to do full-day kindergarten when no other administration had done it before. It's not because they couldn't, it's because we now have the space. So that's one clarification point for kindergarten. Preschool as well, we have the space where we, we used to have 8,000 students when I started in 2012. So we have space to make it happen. So therefore, we are. And we, as far as partnering with the, you know, other districts, and you're concerned, the growth is 212 to 283. So it's about six or seven classrooms. I understand the concern, and because we just started, we're a month in, literally, just over a month in, which is what the state said, slow down, get your program running with fidelity, and you'll be able to, you know, grow significantly the future year. We have right now one partner, the Garden State Academy. We are now definitely going to have Head Start, because that's pretty much, they're telling us that. And we're going to go into the provider selection process going forward to say where they'll be and how we'll be managing that. But the actual growth itself is about 71 students. So it is 71 students. So I hear you. And it is new, which is why the state said slow down. And we are, we're listening. All right. I have more, but questions on the budget piece, okay. Enrollment, current year, this is the breakdown as far as the current year of in-district contracted Head Start versus contract provider. So you'll see left to right the growth and where it'll be. We are at capacity in this building, therefore, all the new students will be placed in other facilities, whether it's a Head Start or a provider. Questions on that? Where does the budget go? Staffing salaries benefits FICA. The new staff, that's been, you know, already, you guys have already approved everybody. I'm speaking to the director, sitting director anyway, right now, Mr. Dorso. There is provisions in the grant. They don't, for example, I'll give teachers. Right now, teacher ratio, we have 14 teachers in District, one at the high school, 13 at our slave ball complex. The state does not advocate for a high turnover in substitutes. They don't want Johnny coming to substitute today, and Suzie doing it tomorrow, and Millie doing it on Thursday. They want a consistent person for the program. They fund what they call floater teachers and floater paras. So although we didn't utilize that initially in the grant, I do believe in the next month or so, we'll be having conversations with you funded by the grant for these positions so that there is consistency throughout the program. On a, there's ratios that they recommend, no more than one to eight for substitutes. So we'll see 14 rooms, we're going to try to do two. And for paraprofessionals, they want the same consistency, and they say one to six. So we may ask for, you know, two or three in that regard. Additionally, bookkeeper slash, they call it fiscal analyst, when you have more than 10 or 12, and you have multiple sites, you're supposed to have somebody clerical to do that kind of tracking that Sean is doing right now. And it's a lot. So we read that as the grant as well, granted, it'll be grant-funded. That's in addition to the secretary, who's going to help with onboarding and recruitment. So they call a fiscal analyst, so we'll be looking at that as well. Outside of that, there's no new staffing going into this budget. Professional development, continuous, we're going, I think, this month. We do a huge push at the end of the year as well. They advocate to use your money through June 30. They are very aware that the funds, the school year ends mid-June, but the state is an advocate of doing professional development through the end of June to make sure you have the best program. In this budget, we'll also have classroom furniture for new rooms. It is a district responsibility to outfit the initial classroom. That includes the furniture, as well as the initial curricular pieces, you know, the manipulatives, all that fun stuff. Consumables are also in here, just things that come up. We have the technology, that piece is done this year, but there's a few things in there. We also have to pay for the provider and the Head Start tuition. Any questions on that? Outreach, lottery. Last year, we did like a first-come, first-served. It amazed us how we got to 300 so quickly, and we didn't need a lottery, because now we have a very short waiting list if there's ever a move, somebody moving out or drops out of the program. However, going into next year with this being a successful first year, and we're calling it post-COVID, and we do believe with the slots we have, we will have to have a lottery system. That will be developed and rolled out and communicated with the Board in the next few weeks. Hopefully, we're interviewing now for a supervisor of that department or that program. Depending on their start date, it may be provided by Ray Dorso and I, or maybe that new person rolling it out. But there will be a lottery system as far as how it's onboard, how we recruit. Location of placements, we're trying to use, just like right now. Location of placements, we're trying to use, just like right now, we have districting lines for like Alder and Fernwood, based on where you live. We're hoping, based on the locations we partner with, which we don't know yet, to be able to regionalize that way to make the transportation the most efficient. So that, as far as where they go, is still to be determined. And we will use the similar tools that we did last year. So that's a question for that, answer for that. Question, joint outreach, I put the word joint on here. It is wherever we, whoever we partner with will do a joint outreach with us, because they have existing families and they'll be able, they have to, they're required, God bless you. They're required to promote the program within. Ms. Alabarda?
Two questions. The first one, the kids that, the three-year-olds that are currently in the program, they will just move on.
Automatically age up, correct, they will not have to reapply.
Okay, and the second thing is, the classrooms that are outside of our buildings, are there nurses there? And has consideration been given to students that maybe do have medical needs that should be?
Correct, we have, so yes, you're required to have nursing services. If you don't, the district will help, and we just offset the budget, we pay the provider to cover those costs. That's the nursing question. We have kept, and it hasn't been the best for transportation mid-year during COVID, to keep the more severe inclusion students, but they are inclusive students. They are not the self-contained, highly severe, if you think of M.D. or autism. So they are just ones in the general population, hoping to transition into gen ed population anyway, so. But we have kept the ones that we feel that we want to have our hands on to make sure that they are successful into our program. So we've done a little bit of tweaking into this year. Going into next year, because it'll be a regular year with spring enrollment, we will have time and make sure everybody is where they're supposed to be, and make sure everything is more efficient, but that is something we do consider.
I was kind of thinking more along the lines of kids maybe that are diabetic or CF or something like that.
Well, the medical needs as well, we would, yeah. But they have nurses, yes, it's up to you.
Does it, in this grant, does it specify anything about as far as preschool with income eligibility?
Income eligibility specifically with Head Start. So with Head Start's program, there is specific criteria. Head Start will be responsible for recruiting their own students. And they're familiar with this. We help, we advocate, we promote, but it's no set, what we've learned through this process is if we go and we do this lottery and we pick all these families, and then we say, hey, 30 of them are going to Head Start, Head Start gets their paperwork and they're not eligible for the Head Start program, which is federally and state-funded. So Head Start will be actively looking at their own population, because they are not just a preschool, they do have younger kids, maybe aging up. They will be able to consider families that they are, they know are already eligible. And they may ask us for assistance in identifying some others if they, if they have a gap.
But the students that will?
But our students are not based on income eligibility, is that what you're going to ask?
Yeah.
Yes.
They're not, so. So I just, you know, I was just thinking, I guess of you, not so much.
The lottery criteria, is that where you're?
The lottery, and then just when you said, you know, trying to have transportation, make it easy for transportation, kind of send the students to whatever particular school. My only concern is just, just making sure that it's equitable and that there's, you know.
Representation for all groups, yeah.
Different groups, and it's not like.
So that's the rubric we're going to be bringing back to you, just to give you guys a heads up of how we'll be doing the lottery. We're still, you know, discussing the house.
You know, sometimes people say, well, I want to go to this school or that school, I don't, I don't want to go to Davenport, I don't want to go to Swift, or I want to go to Slaywall or Swift. And I just don't want to see that kind of same stigma be attached to the preschool program.
I get it, yep.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So is there money in the grant for additional paraprofessionals in these preschool classrooms? Because I'm thinking about our babies who have more developmental issues or, you know, coming in from early intervention. You know, they require a little more hands-on assistance, some of them do. So right now, we have one para in the preschool room, a teacher, and then a special education teacher who floats, correct?
That's the structure now, full-time teacher, full-time para, a special ed floater. We also going to have the teacher floaters and the para floaters, which are going to assist, provided there's no absenteeism. However, to answer your question, if there's a need arises, we have local funds. Remember, we talked about last week in the budget transfer, you have to help fund to support the special ed population? That, those funds can be allocated towards that need if there is a need. And just to clarify, because we did get some correspondence from families at home, this is not to distinguish between general ed and special ed, it's just the buckets of money. I wanted to just make clear of where it's coming from. It's not to say we're not serving all the students, it's just to explain the buckets, so. There is a bucket for those needs, yeah.
I'm, I'm just thinking, a lot of our students, some of them might not be potty-trained, so you have a para out of the room, you know, helping or in the bathroom, helping a student with those needs. So then we have a teacher with all those students, you know.
We are one month in, but we already have, we already have that on our radar, and it is something to consider for next year, for sure, it is. And that's what that help with the special ed, with the bucket of transfer, is to specifically support the special ed component. We're hiring speech, that's how the speech therapists were funded. You can't fund a speech therapist with this preschool grant, which I think is crazy. As a general person, an adult, when they're three and four years old, you should have some kind of a help assistance there in the speech world. But they're saying, no, that's a special ed function, you have to fund that locally. So we believed in it, and we actually did have that in our grant as well, so. As a social worker, and, yeah, we'd only said one social worker, we put two in there, so we definitely have. And it's an ongoing conversation, so they're all great ideas, yeah.
As a needs basis, would that be based on IEP or would that be based on teacher feedback?
Combination, so we tried to, at this particular program, because of the inclusive setting, and you don't want to restrict a family, and I'm, I don't want to misspeak, I probably should have Ray speak. We don't want to, you know, identify and say a specific student, a specific IEP, because if they're at that level of severity, probably a different setting. This is more inclusive program, so it'll be more just a classroom support. You may have two here versus just one, if we find the classroom management is a little bit different. But if Mr. Dorso wants to chime in, I will go.
Sure, I can, I can definitely chime in. So yeah, to agree with Ms. Anaya, it would be a combination of the two factors there. One would be definitely per IEP. And of course, we're going to listen to our teachers and our master teachers and our peers person. We've already gotten lots of feedback and have tried to kind of make adjustments on the fly to support specifically those types of issues with nap time and students going to the bathroom door, nap time, those kind of things. So we're definitely cognizant of those factors.
I'll leave you up there, go ahead.
I, I just am concerned that. I don't want any children turned away from an inclusion setting, because they might have higher needs. And with only one aide in a classroom, if that student is requiring more attention, I don't want them put into an M.D. room because there's more aides there. So I think that we have to be very careful, you know, in, in how we determine who goes where.
Sure, if I can, Ms. Bird, I'll just speak to that point, and I can assure you, just looking at our projections for next year and just district philosophy, kind of following up from our conversation the other day very briefly, we're not pushing hard to the, toward the less restrictive environment and feel strongly that we want our kids in those gen ed settings. And our philosophy is going to be that we will support the student in that setting and get them in there as, as long as the IEP team feels that's the team decision. I will personally administratively push hard in that direction.
Mr. Irwin?
Thank you, I just have a quick question. With new enrollment, new locations, are we still going to be able to support Talons at all those places?
So part of the requirement is to have a wraparound program, they must have one in their own facility. We have partnered this year initially until they get their feet on their ground and have the wraparound here for the offsite provider. But going forward, that is something that is a requirement. And we will work with the other entities if need be, because we already have buses going in those directions, so. We'll do whatever we can to support, to help facilitate, to make sure our kids have the wraparound assistance needed.
Okay, so we may have to move some people around if people require Talons compared to different locations?
No, that would not be a requirement for their location. That would, that would not be a factor in considering which school they would attend, that would not be. We would just make it work around that.
And Mr. Irwin, I think Head Start, if I'm not mistaken, has their own kind of wraparound services built into their program.
And that's the same price for both programs? So Talons and then that other one would be the same price?
If I'm not, I could be wrong, and I could follow up with you on this, but I believe it's actually built into the Head Start program. That's one of the kind of nicer things with the Head Start, because as Ms. Anaya said, they are a federal program, they get extra funding, so parents in that program would not have to pay for that service.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to move on past that if we can, okay.
Anyone else?
Anyone else for this, we have more, but that's for now. Let me go back to my presentation. Okay, so we've talked about the outreach and the recruitment. Partners, we kept talking about partners, we need help. And if we had a meeting yesterday for community partners, we initially had, two years ago, started with the identify who is a childcare center in Agrobert Township. We had some interest meetings, we had some surveys go out. We invited several to come yesterday, we had eight entities come. It was about 17 people, 14 people actually outside of us, administration. It was a very good meeting, talking about where we are today. And it's all provider world, so not necessarily what we just went through with our students. It was all about the providers, where we are, what the program guidelines are, and what we have to do for next year. This is the timeline specifics of providers on what, you know, kind of happened. I would just highlight the most relevant pieces are towards the bottom. On 2/24, February 24th, we did invite the entities to come and sent information about the program, about the budget, about the contract, so they can be familiar with what the Department of Education requires. We then, we scheduled a meeting at that time and that same email for yesterday at 7:00 P.M. We had the meeting, less than two weeks after getting state aid and realizing we only got 60 kids funded. Had a meeting with the community to say, here's where we are, here's what we want. We did ask the state for more money, we had a phone call and asked if any other school district is struggling with their implementation, and they have to give money back. Can you please reallocate it to Agrobert Township? You know, to consider us for a mid-year adjustment if it's possible. So all that being said, we asked the providers yesterday to submit to us what they could do for next year based on the criteria from the meeting yesterday. Today, we have this presentation, tomorrow, the budget is due to the state. April 1st, we start enrollment. However, specific to providers, this was their next steps. Yesterday was the meeting, they had to complete the contract and budget information for rooms requested for next year. We had eight entities attend, six have submitted, and a total of 46 classrooms were requested. Meeting, eight, six providers submitted to say, we can be ready for September for 46 classrooms or 15 kids each. We have great partners in this community. One, after yesterday's meeting, said, we're just not quite ready, but please keep inviting us. We want to keep the conversation going. And I responded with, let us know how we can help you bridge the gap. One, no responder. Next steps they have to do, after that, the six who did submit today, we are giving guidelines on the memo for the operational plan. They have to submit a memo to the director and myself, what their operational plan will look like for September, based on the budget that they submitted, what their classrooms will be set up with, staffing, how they plan on recruiting, how they plan on rolling their program out. That will be due to us, they have about two weeks to prepare for it. Between then and a board meeting on the 20th, the director, supervisor, whoever's in that role at the time, and myself, will be going through, physically visiting, and going through their plan, making sure they do have creative curriculum, making sure they do have the proper square footers that they say. There's a lot of DOE requirements. At that time, successful candidates will be invited to present to the board at a work session on April 20th. They will present to you a presentation on what the program will look like for next year to partner with. After those presentations, administration will make a recommendation for action for the board, because you do have to sign contracts with the entities for the April 27th meeting. So providers got this timeline as well yesterday. Selection process, again, will be a rubric, based on the requirements from the DOE, who can meet those requirements, who's already meeting those requirements, as we said yesterday, may get more weight than those who aren't quite there yet. We talked about staffing as an example. If you already have P3 certified staff, that will hold higher weight for them, you putting down, you're going to hire certified staff. Makes us feel better to know we already have a program rolling. Using creative curriculum already versus using a different program that they're going to have to learn and convert over in the next few months. So it'll be a rubric, I'll wait to just see if who's ready to roll. If they're not ready, do not be discouraged, there's 900 kids to go around. That was our message yesterday, there's plenty of kids to go around, we can talk again next year. I think that's pretty much my recap for the provider world. Okay, and then we close our meeting, so any questions on?
Sandra, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Will we go back to the last slide?
Which one, I'm sorry, this one or this one?
Yeah, right there.
Okay.
Who pretty much sets the standards and the requirements, are they state?
Correct, the state department.
That have to be followed, right?
Yes, the Department of Education.
Okay.
And all the, everybody who was invited did get the links with the requirements, so they can do their own homework to say, what, I'm not making it up, this is truly what the Department of Education is looking for.
They have to satisfy the state requirements.
Correct. However, like, let's say the state says you can use one of four programs for curriculum. In order for us to manage the programs that are outsourced, to then streamline into a full-day kindergarten program, we are requiring as another standard, you must use what we're using. So there's things like that, but.
All right.
Overall, they are DOE requirements.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, board members?
Sandra, just one more question, are these providers, the teachers in the classrooms, they will come to all of our PDs?
They have to, it's part of the requirement. So there's an agreement we create, and that's with a contract I sent to the providers to make sure they understood what's their responsibility, what's our responsibility. Our contractual day, I'll give a few examples, 184 days. They must have at least 184 days, 180 school days, four days of PD. Our salaries, we start at 54 and change, they have to have comparable salaries for their staff, certified staff, and they have to offer full-time benefits package to their staff. It has to be comparable. One of the considerations we mentioned as an example yesterday, classroom A, classroom B. You have an entity with 10 rooms, you want two rooms to partner with us. So you have those teachers making 50,000 with a benefits package with 15 kids and a helper. The room right next door is with one person with 20 kids making 25,000. The dynamic that does to your entity was something we asked them to all consider, because it's the truth. However, to keep in mind, by doing that partnership in those two rooms, those two teachers can now turnkey and raise the bar for the rest of that entity. So it's a great thing, but it had to make sure that that, that their culture within their organization can handle it. So that was a very good conversation yesterday, so. Okay, we stopped sharing, see if they're good at home.
Okay, the only thing I, I just wanted to sort of add as, as an item is, I'm not sure if these numbers of pre-K students count in our ASA count.
They do.
Well, that's good, because, because either way, they most certainly add to our total student count.
Yes.
And so again, we're going to be, and looking at those numbers you showed us, we're going to be creeping again closer to that 8,000 number of total students that we're responsible for.
Correct, so with only ASA report, it would be considered on-rolled scent. So they are our student, they must register with our district, we talked to the providers about this yesterday. They must register with us, they are our student, they are being serviced by the provider. As far as the provider's concerns, they, they provide the services for our curriculum. That site must have a person in charge that is certified to do evaluations for that said staff. If they don't, then we are responsible for that. So we will, because we're trying to partner with multiple sites, have more weight towards people who have that set up already. The alternative is, we won't know until all the process is done. But if we find partnering with, I'll say, three different entities, and we have the oversight, we do keep a portion of the budget for the oversight. And then we'll be talking to the board to say, we're going to take that portion and hire another master teacher, where we would have to have to physically be more visible and more active at those sites to make sure that they're implementing the programs. But we won't know that until the process is all shaken out and the rubric is created to say what has more weight than others, so. That's the plan.
Mr. Slack?
Sandra, would these teachers in these other facilities be under the teacher's contract that we have?
No, they will not. They are, they are the employees of the entity. They have to have comparable salary, and they have to have benefit package for the certified staff. That is a requirement from the DOE. They are not part of our bargaining unit. They are not our employees. Um, we have no say. We cannot evaluate them unless we have that contract agreement where we're keeping the money to then evaluate them. But that's why they do their own evaluations. We do have a say when we visit. So like, Mr. Dorso will visit and say, hey, that teacher was, um, you know, I was there for forty minutes and they had screen time the entire time. Well, technology is big no-no. It's all about hands-on and keeping them active. So he can say something then to the master teacher or the director to say, that's not something we support. Can you please restructure your class? Or, and then they'll, we have a say that way. Um, and if we keep seeing a problem, we do have the right to non-renew every year with that entity. But, um, they all have the kids at best interest at heart. I don't see that being, um, a huge concern, so. But we have that right, so. Good? Okay. Mrs. Bird?
So, if they're not our employees, but they're our students, what does that do for our liability?
They are our sent students just as much as an ACIT student is our student but sent, if that helps to make sense.
Okay.
So they are ours. We are ultimately responsible for their education. We make sure it's done with fidelity, but.
So if something happens to them off-site, you know, at the other location?
We have a certificate of insurance from the other entity with the proper liability set by the state. Again, they have, the one thing the state doesn't, they don't do a lot of things, right? But I'll tell you, this preschool program is the most thorough thing I have ever seen the state roll out. And it's, if they, they thought of everything. They really did. So, the guidance is great. Good?
Just one quick question?
One more?
Um, so I'm just trying to make sure I'm wrapping my head around the preschool kids that are at the, um, other entities. He said, like, as soon as we have to go to ACIT or what have you. So it's tech, it's not really out of district, kind of sort of, is that similar? Like, I mean, there are students on roll, but they're like, almost like an out-of-district, like?
Okay, so ACIT may be a different conversation. No, 'cause they're still ours. It's, it's, it's sent. So it's on-roll count and sent. So I was gonna use another, like, special services or another kind of entity, but, um, it's, yeah, it's different. It's different than choice. So choice, we have, like, they just kind of say, hey, by the way, I'm going somewhere else.
Right, okay.
We don't have to count them. We don't do anything with them. We do Aiden Lou. We transport over eight thousand, eighty-five hundred, believe it or not. Our transportation report is well over eight thousand students. We are responsible for transporting, whether they're non-public charter or anything. We have to transport, but as far as on-roll versus, um, I know, belonging to somebody else is different.
Okay, and the only other thing was, I know you mentioned about the, um, having the, I don't know, we asked a question about when we have so many, um, pre-K students coming in over the, um, timeline, and how it affects kindergarten and first grade, there's two different grades. I'm just, and I guess I was thinking, I'm thinking even further ahead into middle school, because I know we have three, three lower elementaries, and we have Miller, and then the middle, I think, you know how it kind of tightens up?
Right.
When we all, when they all come back together, I'm thinking like.
So if you think of it as, yeah, it's a good question, but if you think of it as a two-year
Okay.
class size, nine hundred is four fifty a class. And if you look at the very first page of your binder, it has the enrollment there, and we're about four, between, about five, between five and six sometimes in a class. Like, this last year's graduating class was huge. So, it's two classrooms full. It's two class grades. It's not just a class of eight hundred, so we should be fine. Even going through Miller, Miller has higher numbers than that right now, yeah.
I just think about Miller, and I think about the middle schools and the, um, the class size.
Do you want to help me out here? Do you want to help me out?
Miller has a thousand kids, so each class is about five hundred. And we've been, um, on average, graduating between five fifty and six hundred the last couple of years.
So we have five and six hundred, so we can actually have a, a population of a thousand or eleven hundred for this preschool universe. Do you know what I mean? But the state, the state identifies how much it is, and they said it was nine hundred, so that's kind of what we roll with, but it's two grade levels. We should be okay. Mrs. Bird?
Um, thinking of growth, we've been on the decline, but the economy is, has come back, and our housing market is stronger. Um, we had discussions with, uh, township committee to see if there's any plans for more developments, more apartment complexes, because quite few have gone up and are going up right now. That could impact our numbers, so that they, uh, increase so much, we don't have comparable class sizes.
So, it's ongoing. I spoke with Peter Miller, um, beginning of January, end of January, beginning of February, and that's ongoing. They are always soliciting people to come to E H T, builders to come, businesses to come. It is an ongoing conversation. The comfort I have, or a little bit of comfort as far as being on the business side of the world, is we have fourteen classrooms in district. If there is a huge boom, fourteen classes of fifteen students is two hundred and ten students. If that's a, if one class size, you know, that's two grade levels. We have the capacity to then just partner with more providers. We have forty-six classrooms ready to go for September, so that would, it would just translate into having more off-site than onsite, not that we wouldn't be able to service them. That's just straight business mind, if anybody wants to add on the other side of the world.
Okay, is that? Is that the conclusion? So what I wanted to just do is I want to ask board members, um, next week, we will be voting on the total budget number to be submitted to the county. So I just want to, uh, uh, take a moment to ask if any board members have questions, comments, or concerns about the budget? Anything at all on the budget? Okay, seeing none, then we're gonna move into finance and operations. Um, I realize we did not have committee meetings this week, so I'll just ask if there are any updates
I do have a few.
from administration or anyone?
It's just me again. I do have a few, um, board member questions. Again, just to recap, we do send the agenda to the Board of Education on Fridays. They have the weekend to review it, submit questions, and there were a few in finance, so I will just recap those. On the bills list, we're proposing to pay our joint insurance fund for a duplicate payment. So when staff is out on workers' comp more than ten days, the joint insurance fund pays for their payroll and a certain percentage of it. We received a payment twice for the same week for an individual. We have to pay that back. Carl Arena Golf Tournament fee, our golf club, uh, participates in a tournament, and that's the fee to pay for the tournament with the golf club specifically. Tactical public safety, it's a radio installation for new buses. Um, what does this include, and for breakdown and invoices? So it's a total payment of seventeen hundred dollars, and this is for the installation of radios, five-point radios, excuse, not five-point radios, the radio systems on five buses. Um, so I have the invoices here for board member review. We can talk about that after. Me too. The call queuing system, our fancy system that we implemented for hybrid meetings, it did come with a fee, twelve hundred and seventy dollars. It was a one-time fee for the program, uh, not reoccurring. Out-of-district travel, we have three administrators going to the same, uh, virtual event. Registration fees were varied based on some doing, participating in pre-conference meetings and some none. And then, under the facilities report, the monthly report facilities provides, they provide work orders. Um, the question was asked, can we break them out between scheduled preventative maintenance versus, um, not? And how many were scheduled and how many were completed? So I did speak with our facilities director. He is gonna be able to make that happen, so we will have that going forward. On contracts, um, we have contract templates provided by our solicitor, as well as the State Department of Education. Uh, we will be sure to highlight the fact that they are the templates used in our contracts recommended for action. That, Mr. Castellano concludes my statement.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, we do have to take action on five point one, which is to submit the application for the preschool grant for next year. Um, is there anything more technical I need to read than that?
That sounds wonderful.
Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion in a second. Uh, is there any discussion on preschool? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes?
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Okay, uh, moving now into, uh, curriculum again, uh, without a, without a meeting this month, I'll just ask if there are any updates for us.
So, um, just a couple, uh, things. There's only actu- well, there will be action for next week for, um, field trips out of state. I just wanted to point out, this was something that, um, has been, uh, a can we've kicked down the road due to pandemic. Uh, but we are planning for, uh, not this summer, but, um, twenty twenty-two. Uh, that's the field trip for, um, uh, that they would go to Europe, uh, for. Uh, in addition, um, nothing formal, uh, necessarily, but we did have a, uh, additional, um, district, uh, review of literacy. Uh, that was held last night. Um, it was, uh, two, two folks, two board members were virtual, Mr. Delabarka and Mr. Ireland. Uh, two board members were in-person, Mrs. Bird and Mrs. Sullivan. Um, also myself, uh, Mr. Dorso, and Ms. Moss, um, shared, uh, resources and we had conversation. Uh, I can share with the board, um, that, I thought the conversation was, was a great one. Um, we all shared resources, um, both board members and also administration. Um, and I think we're at a place right now where, where we left that meeting and, and came to a conclusion that, um, we are gonna continue to, uh, plan and move forward with our current resources, developing a plan around professional development, as well as researching additional interventions to continue to support our work, uh, around literacy, uh, and making sure that we continue to build capacity, um, especially around our staff, uh, which is our entire staff, administration, teachers, uh, and the like. Uh, and I'd even go so far as to say, as well as our parents. Um, so I thought it was a, a good outcome and want to thank everybody again for their time.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anything else on curriculum? Okay, we're going to, uh, move to personnel, and I'll ask Dr. Trouton if he has any, uh, updates for public session.
No updates, uh, Mr. President. Just, we spoke, you know, in committee about the idea of, um, extending temporary rates for substitutes to the end of the year. Uh, and also, there was a board member question about, under contract resignations, how does that work in terms of employees resigning? And typically, there's a thirty-day hold for paraprofessionals and a sixty-day hold for certified staff. And typically, what we do is we make sure that the needs of our students in our classrooms are first considered before releasing somebody beyond, before those maximum dates. Uh, and if in complex communication with the supervisor or the principal, that we find that that is satisfactory, then we do work with that person to, um, see if we can release them a little bit early, and other districts do that for us as well. Um, when we have somebody that we're hiring and they have a hold from another district. So it's kind of a cooperative relationship between districts, but of course, the students come first.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, we will, uh, need a motion, uh, on seven point two, and I'm gonna ask, uh, Ms. Elko if I need specific language.
The motion would just be to approve the recommendation to submit the contract to the executive county superintendent.
Okay, can I have a motion on that, please?
Motion, second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes?
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move to policy. Um, again, we didn't meet, but I'll ask if there are any committee updates. Anything from?
Not for me.
Anything from the good doctor? Any updates for us, Dr. Herry?
Just the, um, one policy that is being moved for a second reading, which allows the board members to participate, uh, electronically. And, um, there are several other policies that are in the works, but they need additional review by the policy committee. That will be done in the future weeks.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, uh, under new business, we see, yes?
I have a question on the policy that's, that's up, gonna be up for, uh, for the bylaw, I should say. Is it, is it strictly given permission from home to participate in the meetings? That's the way it is listed.
I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's remote.
It just said, it says, board member is prohibited from leaving his/her home due to a medical condition or due to a commitment with, requiring the board member to be unavailable physically.
I think, um, it says that it's, the way I heard that was that it's allowable if a board member is incapable of leaving the sorsete or, that or apart, um, or they can't attend.
Oh, I see what you mean. Unavailable for physical attendance during the time of the board meeting?
Yes. So it's either or. So it can either be for a medical condition, or it can be if they are unable, um, to come to a meeting because they have a prior commitment and they physically can't come to you.
Now, uh, we, we also have a policy that states that if a board member misses three board meetings, now this'll, so we'll have to readapt that policy.
That is, if you miss a meeting, this isn't missing a meeting because they're still attending the meeting, they're just participating electronically.
So are we gonna change that policy?
No, because by doing this, you're not missing a meeting.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on policy? Under new business, we'll have to approve, uh, a request for our buses for the summer, as we normally do, uh, every year. And, um, I'm gonna go now to communications, and I'm gonna first ask, um, Mr. Delabarka, what's cooking with New Jersey school boards?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a reminder that the next Atlanta County School Board Association meeting is scheduled for March seventeenth at seven o'clock virtually, and that is actually going to be a meeting only for the district presidents. So it's gonna be a communication meeting amongst the district presidents. I know, Mr. Castellano, you said you were planned on being there, so that's great. And, uh, there should be a reminder coming out shortly to everybody from the state regarding that. And yesterday, I participated in the, uh, County Leadership Association web meeting again. Uh, this time, the speaker was Amy Hasses, who was from Hamilton Township. She's the president of the school board over in Hamilton. And she spoke on wellness, and she's an expert on wellness. Her work there, I believe, is in wellness, and she gave us a really excellent presentation. Hopefully, she's gonna be our guest speaker at one of our future Atlanta County, uh, presentations, so. That's it. At this time, I know that the state is very busy right now recording the eighth-grade dialogues around the whole state for every county. Uh, it seems that they're having a whole new process this year due to COVID, and they're really very impressed with our eighth graders, uh, around the state. They're doing five or six students at a time, so it's gonna be a, a few weeks before we get finished with the, uh, whole program. But it's gonna be available to everybody in the state, not just the immediate county that the students represent, so I think that's a nice idea. And they're asking county presidents to introduce these programs, so that will be happening sometime in the near future. And I'm sure you'll get all the information from the state when those programs are ready, so. That's it. Thank you very much, and it would be good to see you all. Hopefully, I'll be there in person someday. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that, Lou. Word on the street is those of us participating on the seventeenth, which is St. Patrick's Day, you'd be arranging to have Shamrock Shakes delivered to, to our homes.
How'd you know, Mr. President?
I really like Shamrock Shakes, in case anyone was wondering that. But we thank you for the report. I'm now going to go to Mrs. Byrd on Saturday. Mr. Ireland, Mrs. Byrd and myself attended New Jersey School Board's Legislative Committee meeting, so I'm going to ask Mrs. Byrd to report out on that.
At that meeting on Saturday, current legislation that is sitting on the governor's desk, it was discussed as well as legislation that is still in the negotiation stages. So one of the pieces of legislation is A 4310 S 2691, which authorizes school districts to maintain a surplus of 4% for the 2021 and 2122 school years. And that permits the transfer or use of those funds between line items and program categories without the approval of the Missioner of Education. NJSBA supports this legislation. Amendments have been made to S 1790, A 1662, formerly known as Mallory's Law, also HIB. The revisions include increased fines for not complying. And also, the big one is the creation of a state-level school climate state coordinator. This coordinator will serve as a direct resource to parents, students and educators concerning harassment, intimidation and bullying. The NJSBA supports this version of the legislation. Another piece that is currently being debated is S 3434. This legislation requires a board of education to provide special education-related services to certain students who exceed or will exceed the current age of eligibility for special ed and related services in the 2021 and 2022 school years, should the guardians and child study teams of the district agree. The NJSBA does not support this bill as written because it is a blanket policy which contradicts the nature of an administrative IEP plan and a student's individual needs. So this is still in the works. Finally, Senator, and I don't know if I'm saying it right, Gopal?
Gopal.
Gopal. He is co-sponsoring legislation with Senator O'Scanlin and Senator Sweeney. They introduced it at the end of February, S 3488, which if approved, it will establish a grant program to reimburse districts for a cost analysis on school district regionalization feasibility studies. Yeah, districts who participate will receive incentives to facilitate district mergers, including the slowdown of state aid losses under S 2. The bill would maintain voter approval of any regionalization proposal. This bill allows districts to participate in feasibility studies with or without consent of neighboring districts. Senator Gopal and his colleague Martin Maguire were present during the meeting to discuss this bill and other pending legislation. This is scheduled to be heard this evening by the Senate Education Committee. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Byrd. Very good. And at this point, we come to the fun part of our evening, the apex, our public comment period. So we are going to start with our live, those folks in the room. And then we'll go to emails and the telephone. Going to ask everyone to state your question or comments first, and you'll have three minutes. And as we've said many times, we can't comment on personnel or litigation. And if it turns out that a question is very deep and complex, it may be necessary for someone to get back to you with the full answer. So that will take questions from the room, our live studio audience.
Ladies first. My name's Hector Tavares. I know most of you, some of you at least.
Name and address, please, if you don't mind.
Hector Tavares, from Five Diamond Drive. I'm the executive director of the Egg Harbor Township Police Athletic League. I am the one entity, after last night's meeting, it ended at eight o'clock, did not submit as a provider for the childcare, the childcare, I guess, provider. And I'm glad that somebody outlined how, moving forward, you're going to pick the providers, because my question is, how did you pick the existing providers? The contract to Garden State is in the area of $1.3 million, by my estimate. And I may be wrong, because I don't know that for a fact. But my question is, is how did an entity that did not exist in Egg Harbor Township, did not have a physical building here, end up getting a $1.3 million contract?
You have to make all of your comments, Mr. Tavares.
So whatever you have for us.
Well, okay, so, that's unusual, so, okay. So I have the guidelines that they put up, and I have a couple of dates to add to it. So in March of 2020, obviously, we had the COVID. And I was inadvertently sent an email from the administration that had a contract for Garden State Academy that was signed by someone and dated July 2020. And then on January 2nd, the contract was signed by Alinda P E C C H I E for the Garden State Academy. It wasn't until January 25th of 2021 that the township issued a permit for the construction, or at least the renovations of the preschool. And that permit wasn't approved until February 4th. We had the meeting last night, and after the meeting ending at eight o'clock, we were asked that by today to review a 26-page contract, fill out a budget and have it back to the school board by the end of today. I've been working with the Egg Harbor Township School Board for over 32 years. I've worked with Dr. Herry, with Pete, with Kim, with Lou. Something just doesn't sound right. And I'd like some kind of explanation as to how this is all occurring. That's it.
Okay, we appreciate that. And I'm going to let Sandra walk us through that process.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. So as we discussed in last night's meeting, the selection process was, we were notified in the end of October that we received the funds. We went through our previous community meetings and interest groups and surveys and found first layer, who has created curriculum. We knew we had a very small turnaround time. There were four entities we reached out to. Four entities that created curriculum offered us two spaces, two spaces, one space and up to 12 spaces. After considering the next layer was, okay, how are we going to manage said program with such a quick turnaround? And nobody in the seat of a director or a leader of this program. It's probably best to manage as few sites as possible and look for somebody who's experienced in this program. At that time, there was only one, the one who offered the 12 spaces, who's had three years' experience in the MDAW preschool expansion program. For two years, they have been coming to community meetings wanting to extend to Egg Harbor Township. They have two facilities in Galloway Township. So although the argument is they were not existing here in town, they were the only ones who were ready to step up and meet the district's needs. That was the selection process for last fall. I can't speak on permits or Garden State's processes. I do know the board approved a contract with Garden State on January 26th. At that time, they received an executed copy the next day. We have been in conversation for two years with several entities. We've done more with local entities than Garden State, but they were the ones who stepped up at the end. Including tours, we did locally, we've spoken to other childhood centers before then. How did we select it, I answered that. The guidelines and the turnaround time. So the invite was sent February 24th, specifically with additional information in the email of 20, mind you, it was 2021 information, a 2021 budget, a 2021 contract, and the website for the providers who were interested in partnering to do their legwork, understanding the turnaround time would be quick. Every provider got it, was invited. We had eight providers show yesterday. Six submitted with no problems today. One said, "We're just not quite ready, keep us in the loop." I understand it was appearance a lot of work. The budget itself, I exhibited while I was in my session yesterday, that lasted no longer than an hour. I spent about seven minutes, maybe total, doing the budget as if I was an entity, to show how quick the fields were to enter. How many classrooms do you have? How many students do you have for EHT versus your own entity? I asked them to keep, please keep it at a surface level. It was just a plan to submit. And if we decided to partner with them, it would be a more tailored budget. I'm sorry you weren't able to complete that. I offered services and I spent many hours on the phone today. Not many hours, that's not what you're stating. I had three different phone calls today and one email. And I responded to those questions. I offered my telephone, I offered my email to make sure the deadline was met today. I did not hear from your entity, so I couldn't help you. That is my response, I believe. If there's anything else you want to add, I will.
Okay. Am I allowed to comment again? Further comment, well, when we, when everyone's had a chance, we'll go back, we'll go back round. So anyone else in the room?
Kathy Wasen, EHT EA president. I just have one question, and it could have been, I got a text message that threw me off a little bit when you were talking, Sandra. And in my head, I'm saying it can't be right, so I just want to double check. You said, one of the questions was, well, where do these kids, these preschoolers go as they move through? And we talked about, someone talked about Miller School. And you had said that the studies show that they'll be able to move into the slots because of the birth rates and what is happening. In my head, I'm hearing, I thought I heard you say, "But if there isn't enough room, we will find other entities." Now, we're not talking Miller School level, right? We're not talking Miller School level, in other words, a 4th and 5th grade, you would find other entities.
I will wait for all of your questions and then we'll go ahead, sorry.
Well, that's really it. The other, the other comment I wanted to make is about travel. I know that, I watched a show last night with the director of the CDC. And I can honestly tell you, we have numerous staff that are just, they want to get away, like we all do. And I just want to keep, I want our district to keep an open mind about, if you are fully vaccinated and you travel and you come back, maybe, maybe they could only have to quarantine for seven days instead of that, and get a test and whatnot. So it's just something that I'm throwing out there to keep, keep in mind, to help the staff out when they travel. And that's, that's about it? So now you can answer my question?
Okay, I can clarify that for you. So your text distracted you, that's okay though.
Okay, good.
So the total universe being the 900 or 810, 90% of the universe are two grade levels. 400 in each or 450 in each. So as they age up, when you have current population at Miller right now, between everybody is about 1,000 for next year projection, that's about 500, a class of 500. We can handle a class of 500. So when you have three and four-year-olds combined, making up 900, think of that, when they do age up together, that will be Miller one year. If we have a huge boom, we know we've had 1,100 in Miller, maybe even 1,200 in some years. So we know we have capacity for 500 or 600 per class, because we've done it. In the lower levels, because we've pulled a kindergarten and full day preschool, we may not have said capacity because those were not here when we had the 8,000 students. So we would then push out the pre-K into the providers versus housing them in-house. So it would not be outsourcing Miller or upper grade levels. It truly would be a lower grade level issue because we didn't have those grade levels when we were in our biggest boom of 600 a class or so. Does that make more sense?
It does make sense to me, but I also want to just warn the board members that Miller School is a tight school. You mentioned it.
Yeah.
It's always very tight. So just keep that in mind as the years go by and the growth, whatever it might be, is going to have a big influence in that school.
Thank you for that. And as just for the board's own edification, if we have a boom, we have to educate regardless of preschool. That's not going to change anything. It's just a matter of how many we can house internally or not, as we continue to expand in preschool. If we have capacity issues, I'd have to look at the statute. Once you start accepting this grant, you still have to service so many. But there would be partnerships out there. But if we have a huge boom and we start getting 700 kids per class, the board would have to educate them. We have to find another way. Just wanted to put that out there.
And I believe that we are going to see a population boom sooner rather than later. And I also think we're going to have to be revisiting, redistricting and grade realignment at that K to 5 level. It was part of our last strategic planning effort. But events, you know, overtook it, but we're going to need to get back to that. And then I think Mrs. Wasen also had a question about the travel and the quarantining. And I'm not sure that we would have discretion over that, but I'm going to defer.
Yeah, we've been researching this over the last couple of days, having team meetings about it. And Dr. Charlton, I'm going to let you just comment on this, because you have the latest and greatest. As you met with our supervisor of nurses, our physician, and you shared with staff today. So as of today, go ahead.
And that's, you took the words right out of my mouth, doctor, because it's amazing how much things are changing all the time in terms of what recommendations are and guidance coming from the New Jersey Department of Health and the CDC. Right now, the New Jersey Department of Health follows the CDC's recommendations in terms of travel advisories. You know, and like Dr. Grigio said, even when you register with the airline, they recommend that as well. But the one thing that can reduce it from 10 days to seven days, if a staff member comes back and then gets a COVID test on day three, four or five of their return, and they produce that negative result to the school nurse, then they can come back after seven days. So on the eighth day, they would be able to return to the building. So that is a way of minimizing it now. And, you know, like Dr. Grigio said, you know, we never know what the changes are going to be in the next couple of weeks or month.
Okay, very good. So we're just going to, we're going to see what we have coming in on the line and then we'll go back, we'll go back around.
Would you like to do email before we go to the lines?
Yes, let's, let's do the email first.
No problem.
Should we put the phone number up simultaneously to get that going, whatever you think?
The queuing system will pick it up, no worries.
There you go.
For $1,270, there's an app for that. All right, so going in order of receipt. Dominic Puglies, 28 Shoreline Road, parent of sophomore, EHT sophomore and second grader. Oh, I got to start my timer too. Somebody else, do anything to keep time, if you don't mind? I can't do that, though, thank you. So, "Good morning. I know there's a lot of discussion regarding our current school situation and how to make it better for all. However, I feel our concerns are being dismissed and avoided instead of acknowledged and addressed. When I say acknowledged, I don't mean the repetitive and empty, 'We hear you, we understand, we appreciate you.' Week it, week after week. This is almost more insulting that no response than because all the concerned parents and students have, that have spoken, no, it's not, it isn't genuine. I asked a question last week via telephone line, which when viewing the live stream, I guess you don't realize how delayed the questions are and how they just hang up on you after the questions and you can't hear the response or respond to any questions. And it was not answered, so I want to present it again along with other questions and concerns. Regarding half-days, please explain why this is a preferred plan instead of getting them back full-time? You mentioned food services. Please explain how this is impacted by our kids staying an extra hour and a half? My second grader, along with all K-5, currently has lunch in schools and has, and he gets out around 2:00 p.m. What is the negative impact of keeping them in longer when at this point lunchtime has come and gone? The surveys that went out seemed like an afterthought. They were painted at each board meeting as an answer to why no action had been taken. You had a question on if you want virtual or in-person learning, as if there was, as if it's all there was. Nothing about lunches, nothing about transportation, nothing about comfortability with masks.
Nothing about lunches, nothing about transportation, nothing about comfortability with masks, shields, plexiglass barriers. What was the purpose of leaving out these meaningful items in the questionnaire just to show them later as it's a fault that you all agree to them, if you agree to in-person? There should have been their own questions, their own questions, and could have been, could have garnered their own responses and additional matrix for consideration. I'd like to propose that these be separated into their own individual questions, so parents can have the ability to shape what in-person learning could look like for their children. There is a huge concern about the code of conduct by some board members and how their input will affect our children. For example, there is a constant talk of safety, ensuring safety, making schools safe, ensuring kids are safe, et cetera, et cetera. Yet there are, yet there are members of the board who are against returning to school and don't practice safety themselves. Social media posts displaying blatant disregard for the law and more obviously breaking the law should be condemned by this board. When you can find five instances of driving while distracted, a violation of NJSA 39 colon 4 dash 97.3 in just the past five months, not counting resharing from previous years, you realize there is a problem. I shouldn't have to bring up the mountains of statistics showing how dangerous this is and how many lives are lost due to it. If this was, were handled by police, there would be 90-day suspension of license, three points and a maximum, a minimum of a $600 fine by the third citation within a 10-year timeframe, and this has been eclipsed in just five months. This shows an unnerving disregard for law and public safety, yet can rule on my child's safety returning to classroom, seems hypocritical. There are two other bullets here.
Are we at time? Are we at time? Okay. So, you know, I'm just going to dispute the premise of the question that, you know, we don't care about kids or parents, we absolutely do, and we absolutely do listen. A lot of the question are things that we've answered prior. It's such a lengthy question that I'm going to recommend that Dr. Grugio go ahead and respond via email, so that we can get to everything, and we'll get that tomorrow to make sure that we touch on all the points.
Okay. We have another one? Timer, if you don't mind, thank you. We have Kimberly Minshell, 115 Sandbar Road, Agarbor Township. When will seniors, class of 2021, make up all of their learning loss? How much will plexiglass cost? Why are the students only returning for four days of in-person instruction? Why only half-days and not full-day in-person instruction?
So I think the best way to do that one is email as well, because we've, we've answered all of those numerous times. But we do want to respond, we understand that sometimes folks, you know, are not available or will miss a meeting or, you know, what have you, and it is important to reinforce. So I will have Dr. Grugio get back to that person via email tomorrow and, and make sure we cover all, all the points asked.
Okay, just one more emailed comment. Katie Coggins, 103 Seaside Avenue. Please make the presentation that Trevetti gave made available to the public in the spirit of transparency. I would also like to see the results of the Google survey that was released and has since closed, not including the results that are being collected via phone call, as obviously not are all in yet. Thank you.
I'm, I'm not sure which survey. Do you know?
That was the public comment. This was sent, let's see, that date was Thursday, so that may have been when the surveys were active last week or through the board.
That's our survey, correct?
I can't make assumptions, I'm just reading, it just says the Google survey.
Yeah, we didn't do a Google survey. So I mean, we certainly can, you know, release the results of our district survey, but that's the only one that we're aware of. And so I'll have, Dr. Grugio will do that. I'm just, well, I was just speaking in terms of the survey, but...
Oh, yes, we, we shared the data tonight with, with public and the board, and yes, the survey will be placed on the website. Results will be placed on that website.
Yeah, we're, we're going to do ours, yes. Did I miss any other segment of that? Trevetti presentation.
Correct, the Trevetti presentation made available to public as well as the survey results.
Well, you know, that, right, we would see if we'd have to have his permission to release that, which we would check on. And that, yeah, that was presented at an administrative meeting as well. Do we have anyone on the line?
I'm going to do my thing first and then I'll put them live.
Okay.
Agarbor Township public comment, name and address, please. Agarbor Township public comment, name and address, please. Please hold. You are now live streaming, please go ahead with your public comment. Actually, your name and address, please. Sorry.
My name is Shannon Doyle, I reside at 204 South Hurst. I have several children, and if you are young and will be looking at their preschool program in the upcoming years, we also move several times, both to and from this area, from very practiced and pre-
Ms. Shannon, if you don't, if you don't mind slowing down just a hair, we have a speaker system, we really can't hear you.
Okay.
I'll start.
I have several children that are, that are young and will be looking into the preschool program in the upcoming years. We've moved a few times, so I've had a lot of practice with preschool selection, both in and out of the area. I found that there's a wide range of preschools and teaching abilities in the EHT area, and I just wanted to express my concern as a parent that the school district will be able to somehow maintain reach within the subcontracted program. I heard you say earlier that the district may, will not be able to formally evaluate the teachers and that our only recourse would be to not renew next year's contract. As a sign of concern, as I have actually told my oldest child, my highly rated program in the area, due to poor seating and poor witness interaction with the staff. I understand that, you know, you said that you could change it for the following year, but that still leaves, you know, possibly a three-year-old child with a poor-performing teacher for a whole year. It makes it really challenging as a parent to sign up for a lottery, knowing that my three-year-old child could be sent to a third-party provider and that the district may have minimal oversight or ability to influence my child's teachers' education. I would highly encourage the boards to request that this is considered, or highly encourage the boards to request that this is considered during contact creation with these various third-party schools and that a provision be included to allow the district to intervene at any point during the contact period if needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good points noted, very good points.
I can make a few comments on that. So I, I made it very, very simple, and that is not the only recourse. It's actually in the contract what they are required to do and how they're required to act. The board approved that contract January 26th. There is recourse as far as our involvement in remediation. There is the State Department of Education who actually comes and actually looks at programs to redirect. It is an ongoing process, it's not a, oh, it's not working out, we're just not going to, there are several steps in between to help with the process, and it is in the contract language that they have to meet those needs. So I, I apologize for making it so much, condensed, much more condensed than it really is.
Okay, thank you.
Not in queue at this time, we just put the phone number back up to see if there's anybody else. I think it's a follow-up.
Okay, so we're going to go back in here, in the room. So Hector, Mr. Dorsso would be glad to meet with you. Does it make more sense to do it that way?
Well, my only concern for the board, I don't know, like, I got two things. First of all, the Davenport School-
So are you going to come and ask a question, or will you meet with Mr. Dorsso?
No, I, I would like to meet with him and get an understanding, but there was another issue I forgot to bring up. We share a field at Davenport School, and it's been chained and unmoed since this whole COVID thing started. And if we can get a lock to the chain and have somebody mow that field, that'd be appreciated. And the, the concern back with the preschool is, when I look at what I believe transpired, and I don't know all the facts, and I was hoping that you guys would, but imagine if you could, that you guys decided that you were going to hire a landscaper. And whomever on the board went to somebody, their friend, and said, hey, we're hiring a landscaper, in order to get the contract, you need six lawn boys, you need two walk-behinds, three of us, if you get it, you're going to get a $1.3 million contract. You folks signed a contract with a school that does not exist. You, you signed a contract for $1.3 million and then permitted them to build the facility. What other business in this town would not have taken that? You have eight other entities that would have said, hey, if we know what we needed, which we did not, we were, we were told that we needed bathrooms in the, in the classrooms. We got one building that has classrooms in the ba-, bathrooms in the classrooms. But imagine if you were told ahead of time that you were going to get $1.3 million. Would you go out and build a building? Because that's what Garden State did. They went out and they got a building, and after they signed a contract, they renovated it, renovated it. Think of the potential corruption. Think of the potential corruption that you guys are possibly permitting.
That's it? Go ahead, let Ms. Howe go first, and then I'll go.
I was just going to say that, Mr. Tavares, the district went through a process through the business administrator in the state of New Jersey to go through the requirements of getting the grant and partnering with preschools. And we absolutely deny anything or any wrongdoing.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want someone coming up to this podium and using the word corruption, because that, that just doesn't fit here. You know, we've, we've gone over it. I think it's been covered.
How many of you guys have seen the school?
I'm sorry, we're done.
None of you, right?
No, you're not going to yell from the back of the room. We don't do that. We have public comment in an orderly fashion from the podium.
None of you have seen the school, correct?
Okay, we're now going to move to board member comment. Board members. Mrs. Berg.
Do we know how many staff members have already been vaccinated, or how many staff members are interested in being vaccinated, should we get that opportunity from, you know, a pharmacy or a hospital to come to our schools? So that might help us. If we know only 800 of our staff need it, then we need less vaccinations, might help us get them quicker. That's it.
Good point. We'll find that out. Other board members.
Mr. President, I have one.
Officer Price.
Hi, Ken?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'll be brief, I know it's been a long evening, and appreciate everybody coming out, making calls and participating in the process. I wanted to thank Sandra and Dr. Grugio for the great presentations tonight, they were very informative, as we're making our way through the budget. I know I had some questions and they were answered, and I probably have some more questions, but I appreciate the hard work that you're putting into this. I also wanted to mention in regards to the final, or, I'm sorry, to the financial disclosure statements, I did receive email, you can probably elaborate on that a little bit better, but I did fill that the best I can, and I, I think that it was submitted, so maybe you want to comment on that. And other than that, I'm looking forward to see everybody next week on the 16th, so that's my comments. If you have anything really to add on the financial.
Since you're asking, do I wait till administration comments, Mr. Catalano? Or just go ahead and give feedback?
About the financial disclosure statements, yeah. I, I think you should, well, make-
I can wait for administration to-
Okay.
I'll make sure I do address that.
Yeah, that's fine. Because, yeah, I got my email as well.
What other housekeeping, I guess, to make sure everybody's on the same page today?
Other, other board members. See, Mr. Allen's electronic and actual hand are both up.
Trying to follow the rules, thank you. So I just want to say thank you, Dr. Grugio and staff, for answering all my budget questions as I had a concern with the HVAC facilities, but everybody reached back to me and got all the answers I needed, so thank you, I appreciate that. And it was very quick. I also want to say thank you to Dr. Grugio and the staff as well for helping out with the middle school sports, because I know a lot of parents reached out and really wanted our, the kids to get out there and exercise and participate in middle school sports. And you acted very quickly on that. And I just wanted to further comment on Mrs. Wasen's comment, because I believe the CDC does say that they should and not must for quarantining. So maybe that's something that the policy committee, we have to come up with a policy, because I don't think there's anything that says that, like, staff must quarantine, it just says should, and those are just recommendations. So just throwing that out there, maybe we have to look into that a little bit further. But that's it, and thank you for everybody for coming out.
Other board members? Ms. Alvaro.
I have to agree with Patrick on the middle school sports, I'm really excited to hear about that, and neither of my middle schoolers are playing sports that are in the middle school, but they feed our high school programs, and that's, you know, it's important to have them. But I was also really excited to see, under curriculum, the travel, getting geared up for next year. As I traveled with Agarbor Township High School two-year twice, once in my junior year, once in my senior year, and that fueled my passion for travel. And I ended up working on a cruise ship for 18 months, traveling to over 50 countries, going up the Amazon River and doing amazing things that I may have never done had I not had that experience in high school. So I think that having these opportunities and planning, hoping that, you know, we can do it with COVID, that we're providing experiences for our students that really could help shape the adults that they're going to become one day. And it, it just helps you to become more worldly and understand, and we have a global society, and that is so important. And I also just wanted to see clarification on the, the PPE being provided to students. What do, do the parents need to provide, anything besides masks for their students to return on March 22nd?
No, we will be, we will be providing the PPE. And they, of course, have the option to wear their own as long as, so it's not a gator or the vented mask. Thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan.
This is a really simple question that I just noticed tonight. Can we get a stool for our cameraman? He's been standing, and I never, and we've had four-hour meetings, so I appreciate what you're doing. So hopefully we'll get a stool for you next meeting.
Absolutely. Other board members? Mrs. Slar?
It must feel like I have to say something. But it's really exciting to see that things are almost getting back to normal. We're talking about going back to school, we're talking about sports, and 18 and 19 cases of COVID, like, it's almost nothing, really. So I just hope that things keep going the way they're going, and thank our audience for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
I just wanted to go back to a statement of reference to the quarantine guidelines from the CDC. So is it, is it, now, is it true, but is it safe to say that the districts, school districts can have policies based on what they feel may be best, as long as they're not less than with the guidelines from the Health Department or the CDC guidelines? Sorry, we can't do less, but we can do, we can do more in our guidelines? I don't know if that's, if that's accurate. Like, in other words, you can, things can be a little bit more tighter, but they can't be any looser than what the guidelines set forth by the Health Department?
So we have to follow the executive order, the executive order from Governor Murphy, the New Jersey Department of Health guidelines, and our doctor's orders from our school doctor. So they could be tighter than those guidelines, but those guidelines are the minimum.
So that's correct, we can, we can do more, but we can't do less? Okay, so I guess just, and even with what Ms. Slar just said about how we have 18 to 19 cases and that's really nothing, I think, I'm just saying, to keep it that way, we need to look at our requirements that, I just think that we should look at, you know, just relook at our requirements as far as just for quarantining, those that do travel outside of the tri-state area. I don't think that 18 to 19 cases is nothing, I think a case is a case because, like I said, COVID affects everyone differently. Some people get, you know, they're out for a couple weeks and they're down a little bit, and then some people lose their lives. So, you know, we can't, it can't be a blanket statement of reference to COVID. But that's why I just wanted to make sure that we still, even though things are seeming to be on the up, that we don't, that our guard down to the point where we could possibly see an increase in cases as well. I just want us to be mindful of that, and I'm sure that we all are, but I'm just going to put that out there in forefront that this is just my opinion, that we're not 100% in the clear, and I think we all know that, but just to keep that in mind, that we're still in the pandemic.
Other board members. Mrs. Slar.
When I said nothing, I didn't mean that it was nothing, but compared to the numbers that we've had before, this is really good, and it is something to be concerned about for anybody, and I just hope that nobody really took it the wrong way, that it wasn't needed that way.
No, I didn't take it that way at all. I understood what you meant, I just said, I just referred to it as, I just don't refer to it as nothing. That's all.
No, I just did, I just wanted to clarify myself, that I wasn't concerned, it definitely wasn't a concern.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to twist your words or add anything to it.
I know, but I just, I was talking about everybody, not just you.
Okay.
Other board members. Mrs. Berg.
Last April, we signed a resolution giving Dr. Grucio more power storing, you know, the executive order in the state of emergency. I think as a board, we should start considering when we're going to take back our, you know, not take back, but resume our responsibilities as a board, and I think we should start considering that. Because things are going back to normal more.
I'm going to first let Ms. Halgalco, you know, respond, but I don't think we've given up our responsibilities.
No, you definitely haven't given up your responsibilities. What that resolution did was it said, if we have a policy out there, for example, that students need to be physically in attendance at the district, it's giving the board the authority to say, and Dr. Grucio the authority to say that, well, under the governor's executive order, we now have to allow for virtual students so that we can't possibly follow that policy. So instead of amending that policy to say we're not following it, we've just given Dr. Grucio the ability to not follow that particular policy. And instead of going through all of our thousands of policies and pointing out all of those policies that might affect virtual learning, hybrid learning, all of the unique circumstances, what we've done is we've said, you have the authority to say, following the road back, the New Jersey Department of Health and the executive order of guidance, that we can deviate from those policies during this public health emergency, only during this public health emergency. So I would agree with Mr. Kessel, and I don't think we've given up anything. And you can certainly revisit that if you want, but I would say those circumstances, as long as we're still virtual and hybrid, those specific circumstances when it comes to policies still remain.
So I think I used my own words, so I apologize, I didn't, I didn't mean it like that. But I do think it's something that we should consider at some point.
Any other board, any other board members? One last, one last one, it's okay.
One last one, that's kind of, and I mean this in the most respectful way. I definitely, I know that some of the email statements that came in, the email, no, 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 no. I'm just saying the email comments that came in, I get from speaking to, I'm not talking to those individuals, more so to the president, I guess, or Dr. Grucio. I just would definitely be interested in seeing the response to some of the questions slash statements because I really wasn't, I just wasn't clear on some of the, some of the, I didn't know if they were comments or questions or accusations, I don't know what they were, like with the driving, I just...
So typically, Dr. Grucio only responds to the questions, not the actual statements because it's like a public comment, a statement is a statement of personal opinion.
Okay.
But if there's questions in the email, then she does respond to those questions as appropriate.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, good. So I'm going to now just go to administration to finish up.
You want me to start and then you can wrap it up?
Sure.
So financial disclosures went out last, I can't tell, a blur, maybe yesterday, maybe last week. This date was delayed, usually you guys get them beginning of February. They finally came out with their new software, which was a step backwards from efficiencies, in my opinion. But neither here nor there, you received them. I did take the time to print out a blank one to try to help mold the conversation of what belongs where for board members as well as administration. If you need help, definitely reach out, we will go through and have them submitted on time. If you are a new board member, even a returning newish board member, you only have 30 days. Everybody else has until April 30th, so definitely get them in sooner rather than later. And if you have any questions, let us know.
Mine is done.
I saw the email, I have not opened it yet, but thank you. That's okay, we're not going to say who did it if we didn't do it yet, take your time, make sure you do it right. You can, I mean, you can also, you know, if you need last year's because you're not sure what you use for, you know, Social Security Administration's address or something, you can definitely reach out and I'll get that for you. Only one comment about the public comment, which I'm not speaking to that person, I'm speaking to my board. The contract was just under $700,000, and when you were looking at several factors for quick implementation, it was, the gap they had was a facility, the gap others had was programmatic and staffing. So when you're trying to implement a full-day kindergarten, a full-day preschool, excuse me, with such a quick turnaround, it's much easier to modify a building, and they were able to pull it off very quickly than it is to teach staff and programmatic and compliance things with the very high rigor of a 26-page contract, as was referenced. So it was not just willy-nilly, phone a friend, it was truly a process, so just wanted to say that.
Okay. Oh, you know what, just one quick point. I remember you had mentioned last week, but I don't know if there is any updates. Did you have any updates to our binders for us?
I actually have not, so most changes come from board member comments, questions, and/or new revised agreements, whether things have been modified. We did receive a placement change for tuition, I believe that happened yesterday. With only that change, I wasn't going to reprint binders. I figured I'd wait a week to see if anything else came out of board member inquiries tonight. So you will have either new pages next week or just saying, we only changed this one line before submission. So at this time, there weren't enough to actually create a whole other packet that we're used to.
Okay, good.
Okay, I just want to say thank everybody for your support, for your input, and, you know, to the budget, to what we're doing with preschool, you know, we appreciate your insight and ultimately your support and your thank yous for the hard work that, you know, has been going on. And that's, you know, it's all about teamwork and it's all about providing our students and our teachers with what they need to be successful here in Agrover Township, so thank you.
Okay, very good. So I want to thank everyone for an excellent meeting. Again, next week, we will have our regular meeting, and in addition to regular business, we will be voting on the overall budget number to be submitted to the county. So with that, everyone, please stay safe, enjoy the spring. I did forget to, I'll still forget some people, I forgot to thank our security force members. I forgot to thank our custodians, our groundskeepers, I forgot to thank our coaches and our advisors. We got to see the preview of the indoor drum line last week, and they did a great job, they were so good. I almost got out there and did a little drumming with them. So I probably still forgot people, but I'm doing my best. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We'll see you next week. If you have a favor, we'll see you next week.